Hey. So it's May 23rd, we have a special meeting to reconsider a vote from Monday. I'm not going to go, I know we have a limited time, I think we have one person who has to leave at 1:30. So I'm not going to go through all of the material at the beginning. To jump straight into, actually, we will do land acknowledgement.
Guy, would you like to read the land?
Sure.
Thank you.
Land and Mole, Board of Supervisors, Neologists, Indigenous people of Alaska, whose land we reside on. The community of Girdwood, situated between areas known to be denied and looting, homeland, respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful being part of a wider community that seeks to maintain a sustainable use of Girdwood Valley. Present.
Thank you very much. That's some good phrases to think about as we go into this topic. We will, sorry, I should have formally called the meeting to order at 1:01. Roll call, my name is Mike Edgerton, I'm co-chair, Housing and Land Use Supervisor, in the room on my right.
Brian Burnett, Parks and Rec.
Guy Wade, Robles.
Thank you, and on the phone.
Brianna Sullivan, co-chair and Fire Department Supervisor.
Thank you.
I don't see Jen Wingard yet.
Jennifer not there? Oh, she's far away. Just wait for Jennifer to join in with audio. Hi Jennifer, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
Can you just introduce yourself, we're just doing roll call.
Sure, Jennifer Wingard, Land Use Supervisor.
Thank you. Let's say the motion to approve the agenda.
First, I'm approving the agenda.
Okay, another second to approve, and then we can move on to any amendments.
Okay, and then I'll make a second there, please.
Okay, thank you, Brian, so we've, a move by Guy, seconded by Brian.
Yep.
I believe you have an amendment.
And then I would like to make a motion that we add an additional agenda item to the, to the meeting today. Time pending, it would be a clarification of Resolution 2024-03, the resolution of support we gave to submit the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Awesome.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? Do you want to clarify what is wrong?
So the, after the April 29th meeting, the joint meeting, we put out the resolution of support to submit the comprehensive plan and for the process. And I have created a document that is available at the back of the room and online. Just clarifying resolution of support of the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan as the land use document for the Girdwood.
Okay, so we can discuss that in detail later.
Exactly, thank you.
So first of all, I would, I think there's no more comments or did you discuss that? Okay, let's, we'll do this by assent, is there any objection to accepting the amendment to the agenda? Not hearing any objection, it passes by assent. So now we'll do a vote on the, on the amended agenda, so that's the two items on it. Again, do I hear any, does anyone have an objection? Doing this by assent. Seeing or hearing any objection, the agenda passes. I'm going to do the quick announcements, well, I go to wildfire mitigation day, Saturday, June 15th, from 10 till 2 PM. I'm going to say the public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. I may possibly limit that today depending on time because we have to get through the site in relatively short period of time. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Discussion stay productive, please direct your comments or draw another member to the public. Keep your comments focused on the business under discussion and be respectful of everyone's opinion. First item of business is a reconsideration vote. So just for background, item number, LUC 402, which was a GBOS resolution, which is the fastest resolution at the time passed 3/2 as Resolution 2024-04. In our rules, anyone can ask for, anyone who is on the successful side of the vote can ask for reconsideration either during the meeting or up to 24 hours after the meeting. And there was a request for reconsideration on Tuesday, in 24 hours of the meeting. So that suspends Resolution 2024-04. And our first order of business is to vote to either, either reconsider this item or keep it as is. So the reconsideration was moved by Brianna and seconded by me. So I will ask Brianna, do you want to speak to the reconsideration action?
Yes, thank you, Mike, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And I also want to thank Margaret and Kyle and all GBOS members for taking time out of their day today to be here for this opportunity that I appreciate in our rules and procedures to reconsider an item. And this item from Monday and everything that was said at land use and many things that were said GBOS during our meeting, although we were anticipating this item, it got, it was, I shared that it was very challenging, but it did not sit well with me at all. And because I was on the prevailing side, I could make this motion to reconsider. And that way also, it's just a much more smooth process for everyone. And if we change any votes, I'm not trying to change anyone's vote, but the process to go through beyond this with land use would be fairly messy as we mentioned on Monday. And with this vote, it's advisory to the planning and zoning. So while it's significant, it's not. Yeah, it's something that we can take, take a little bit lighter perhaps. That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you have, just to clarify, do you have a recommendation on how people vote on this, Brianna? You don't have to, just wanted to give you the opportunity.
I'm comfortable with anyone staying exactly where they are on this vote because I'm not trying to change and maybe we had time to think after more comments. Maybe we had time to adjust or more commenting.
Thank you. Would anyone else on the, on board like to speak to the reconsideration action? Brian, please go ahead.
Thank you, this, this is my first reconsideration to sit through and the first in memory for me. And I would appreciate understanding whether we are voting on the entire 2404, 2404, and not just the specific vote, correct?
So the, the action we have, the action we have in front of us now is if we vote yes, reconsideration. This item goes back to being something we can discuss. So effectively our action is cancelled and we then discuss it again and we take the action again.
Okay.
Or any action again, so effectively it takes all motions off the table, we're back at the beginning of discussion.
Gotcha.
Beginning of, I mean, we can still remember what happened before. But, you know, we can then put a motion on if something. If the, if the vote is no, then things stay exactly as they were at the end of the Monday meeting. And there is not an opportunity for further reconsideration, then it becomes a, a pass motion.
Okay, so further question if I may. So we are, we are not voting on the motion that was at the meeting, the amended motion. We are, we are voting.
Effectively removing this and starting, going back to the original discussion without a motion on the table.
So, yeah, so this is like it was written kind of similar or this, this looks like they're really already one of the issues on Monday, Guy.
This is the motion which was passed, yes.
This is, this is the motion we passed.
Passed on Monday, yes.
You passed it with the exception of Glacier Creek Development? No, yes.
No, not like that, this is the motion being passed on Monday. And a no vote now will maintain this motion. A yes vote will effectively cancel this out and then we have the item in front of us to discuss again. There will be nothing on to.
So then, if we were today to move this forward like this, we are, then, then we need to take action to reconcile between land use and.
Yes, we still have, so if whatever we do today, if the outcome is not identical to land, you're not the same intent as land use, then we have a process whereby we can reconcile if we have time. And because we're having the meeting today, we do have at least next week to do that reconciliation. Yeah.
It's very, very. I promise.
Clark.
We don't just, if we change our vote today, wouldn't we just go back to a consent?
No, that's not how it works, so the, the way it works is we just. Okay, if there are no other questions from the board, I think we should move to the reconsideration vote directly. So just as clarification, a yes vote means we revisit the item, a no vote means we stay exactly as we are. Okay, could you do a roll call, please?
Yeah, second I want somebody.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike Edgerton. Okay, Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
No.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1.
Thank you, right, so now what we have is effectively a decision on what to do about this item. I am going to wait for somebody to make a motion. Does anyone have a, a motion ready or some language, anything they want to change from like these original proposals? Which was slightly different from this version or indeed from this version?
Mike, this is Brianna, may I ask a question?
Please go ahead.
I don't know what's on the screen, so do, I'm happy to move the first amendment that was made that we all passed about the, the letter B in that sentence to be fixed?
At the moment, we don't, at the moment, we don't have a proposed resolution in front of us. The first thing we'd have to do is move a proposed resolution and then either amend that or accept that.
Okay, I'm, in that case, I move to the proposed resolution.
Can I just check, see if Jennifer had, had a motion first?
No, same thing, it's fine.
Okay, right. So this is the.
We don't have anything yet.
So we're ready, okay. Unfortunately, I don't have that ready available.
Are you looking for the one that you and I?
I think suggestion is to go from the, the one that was proposed on Monday's meeting.
So we can look at that in the meeting packet from Monday.
Okay.
Although it's one page in the 490.
The alternative.
You know what, Kyle, you could find it in the, in the file. So if you just go back to the G drive and then out again into 2024 packet.
GBOS?
Yeah. You're there. And then packets, and then.
A.
May. And then it is going to be. 10.
A.
No, just plain old 10. One up, yep.
Okay, so coming up. This is the.
So.
Thank you, can you show that without revisions, just to make it cleaner? Click the.
I'll mark up this on the top if you need to, they'll see, no, you know, right, yeah.
No, Mark, there you go.
So thank you. Because this is, this is the version that was proposed, so I don't mind which of you two, I think both of, both Jennifer and Brianna suggested that we should move this. I don't mind who is considered to move and who is considered the second. But expediency, we'll just consider that motion of being made, is that, are you happy with that?
Yes.
Right, so this is what we have in front of us. Believe this still contains the mistake of mentioning track B, can't quite see it.
Yeah, it's at the bottom.
Right here.
So I'd entertain a, an uncontroversial motion to just delete the term track D, B, because that is an error. Yeah, I think we just, we'll just remove.
Still moved.
Your second? Thank you. I will entertain, I think we'll do this by consent unless anyone objects. Not hearing any objection, that track B phrase is removed. Okay. Anybody else have any recommendations or thoughts or? Hearing any? I would like to make an amendment, I typically don't, the chair, so I would normally hand this off to Brianna, but since she is online, I think I'll just hold. Right, I'm not hearing any other amendments, any other discussion, check. It's actually have something to say, if you can, normally, actually Guy, if you could just normally take the checks, I'm not going to do the check in the next minute. Yeah, so I have something just to generally talk about. So there are multiple things going on here. There is a, there's an area master plan proposal, there's a development master plan proposal for phase one. There is also a comprehensive plan that we have submitted from a community that had a huge amount of community involvement. I think we all know that the comprehensive plan is in conflict with the intent of the result here. And at some point in the future, assuming comprehensive plan is adopted, which I expect it to be, that problem is going to have to be resolved. We have a community statement and a comprehensive land use plan that will say this land should be open space. We will have an area master plan, which passed before, probably, the comprehensive plan, which is inconsistent with that compromise plan. So the problem of the land, whatever we do tonight, the problem and that conflict is still going to remain. It's depending on timing, it will be a conflict and a problem which will have to be dealt with during HLB's action. If they do a transfer, it will have to be dealt with at, at some point when the, if there's a development master plan that comes up with phase four, so this problem still exists. We don't solve it one way or the other to this document. What I wanted to, what I want to comment on, and I don't like about this document stands, is it basically says we don't approve the Glacier City Village development. And I do not have that opinion, I don't think the majority of people in the community have that opinion. I think the majority of people in the community don't like the location of the development. I think if that development or an idea very similar to that was proposed for Holton Hills, the community would have been in favor because it, it has exactly the kind of mix of housing. I know this cynicism about whether it will happen or not, but in terms of the concept and the idea and the intent, it has exactly the kind of housing solution we want in this one. So what I don't like about the way this is phrased is it basically says no to that development. It doesn't distinguish the location of the development from the concept of the development. So that is, if I was able to amend that, that is at least one clarification I would seek to make. So as it stands, it's a little bit too blunt, it doesn't solve the, doesn't solve or address really one way or the other, the, the issue of the conflict of land use. However, it appears to say that we don't like that type of development because we don't agree with the Glacier, or the Glacier Creek. So I personally won't be supporting it, that's it, for that reason. Thank you. Do you want to, do you want to hand the chair?
Oh, yeah.
That's my second, there you go. Thank you, anybody else want to speak? The board?
Thank you. I am looking forward to supporting a, a motion today that is in line with the, with the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan. And I believe, I believe that what we've got going forward here is talking more about the land that it is located on as opposed to the development. Thank you.
Did you have something else to go?
I'll, I'll make it.
Okay, anything from the two board members online? Okay.
I was waiting in case Jennifer wanted to say something, this is Brianna. I agree with your statements, Mike, in that everything from land use and the meeting, our meeting on Monday was, as we know, because many of us have been involved with the comprehensive plan, the issue is the area, the, the location of phase four. But today I was, today the support will be more comfortable with me for my vote to support what land use came out with, which is not supporting the phase four, but supporting phase one, two, and three. And if anyone wants to amend that statement as to why, so that planning, zoning, or anyone else can have one reason, I'm happy to come forward with that or second that.
Jennifer?
Thank you, well, I agree with what Brianna said, that if we want to make it clear that we're not opposed to the development in general, that, that would be fine. Although I do, I do feel like it's kind of splitting hairs with developments like how to run. We didn't imagine where in the valley it could be or whether or not it would be all right. And it, I think it's consistent within our institutional history to react to and comment on developments based on where they are. I mean, that's just part and parcel of land use in general. So, so I will be with Brian in supporting this as, as much as possible as it came out from land use.
I can't let the, the comment about parcel, the pun, go, so thank you for that pun, intentional or otherwise. Guy, is there something you want to add?
Yeah, I guess, I just, you know, all over the year, we've talked about a form of housing, employee housing. And, you know, we have a Girdwood Housing Economics Development or Committee that has came up with ideas and, you know, they, they've watched a couple of ideas, you know, and locations that would require some work and some moving around of, of things in our community. But, you know, they don't even get out, they don't even get out of their committee because they're, they're shot down for where they, because they want, we want, we all want this development, we just don't want it there. And so, you know, with Holton Hills, we, with CY Investments, we tried to be with them, it wasn't, it was corridor meetings, but we pushed for more workforce housing. And we didn't feel like we got what we needed and we pushed hard for it. And, and then that went away, then just came up, up out of nowhere, just going forward. Now I don't know what kind of communication we're going to have with them going forward and how much workforce housing we're going to get out of that. We, on the same night that land use voted on this, we also took a private developer and somebody trying to put in some condos and we forced no short-term rental agreement were in our resolution because we all agreed that we need workforce housing. And so, and then on the night of the GBOS meeting, several people chimed in, respected members of the community in support of the one that we just voted down because they had, I can't speak for them, but liked and, and watched us talk about this for so long. And it is never the right place to do it. And so at some point, it's going to require land to build these houses. And condos are, are, you know, like apartments are fine, but we just lost two people at our school, they retired. There's going to be a new cohort coming in, they're going to need houses to live in. They're going to, and they're not going to raise families and, you know, or they may not, in a, in a apartment. Hotel, I mentioned tiny homes, I know the developer, the original proposal for Holton Hills, there's an engineer that had way, had ideas of making houses affordable, I'm seeing small, small home concept. I've, I've known families that have raised their kids in the birdhouse chalets, have no problem with a thousand square foot home and use that as starter home to move forward. But those homes have to go somewhere. So, you know, every time we bring this up and it becomes, and it goes to the assembly, we, they see this in there too. That, oh, look, they, they don't approve this, people are, you know, there's a solution in their eyes and they're not upgrading, this isn't the best motivation, I agree. But we continue, at some point, we're going to have to approve something, no matter where it's at, and it's going to require land and, and a large amount. If it's going to be, if it's going to have any impact, impact at all on housing people, it's going to have to be a large trajectory. And it, so I'm not going to support the, the original one, I just because, and I just, at some point, I think we need to. If we do, if we truly want affordable housing and workforce housing, we're going to have to put it somewhere. So that's just my thought, thanks.
Thank you, Jennifer?
Thank you, I just wanted to respond to this idea, just real quickly, this came up at Monday night's meeting too, I've heard it several times, that kind of this, a view that I view as both reductionist and oversimplistic, but most importantly, factually inaccurate. It is just simply not true that this community has fought putting workforce housing. We fought for two years to try to get workforce housing in Holton Hills. That's what that fight was about, almost universally. We had some people opposed to development there, but we had almost 10% of our voting population show up before the assembly and asked for workforce housing there. Since then, we've had some other proposals, like the proposal to put residential, to add residential into the zoning and the commercial lot down by Tesoro. In the end, I think that the main controversy there only turned out to how fast we could do it, what was the best way to do it? We were falling all over each of ourselves, trying to figure out a way to get that to happen as fast as possible. Furthermore, one of the things that we did get out of the Holton Hills fight, one of the very wonderful things we got was potentially some give and some lots, including the lot at Ruway. Now, I got, I get that this is not huge and doesn't have maybe some of the same potential for one-time impact as the Glacier Creek development, but it certainly has potential for impact. So this storyline that we're opposing workforce housing and don't want it here and we don't want it there, it's simply, factually and demonstrably incorrect. It's something that those of us who fought for Holton Hills, who fought against Holton Hills or more precisely fought for the inclusion of workforce housing within Holton Hills, are allowed to take a little bit personally because we were painted quite inaccurately as NIMBYs. And to have our own community members do that is something that I, I will fight. It's simply not true, it's not the nature of this community. And we have people working very hard, including the members of GHGC, putting hours and hours into trying to make things happen, and they are not blocked in every way. As I said, those parcels sailed through with hardly any dissension at all. So let's give ourselves credit where credit is due and not paint any opposition to this as necessarily opposition to the workforce housing that as a community we've pulled together to fight for for the last three years. Thank you.
Can I, just, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't state my thing clearly enough. I guess what I'm saying is, I know we have pushed for it, but we have in front of us somebody here offering it to us and now we're pushing against it. That's my point. You know, we had to fight tooth and nail with Holton Hills to get something in there. Now we have somebody in front of us who wants to help with the problem and we're pushing against it. I'm not saying that there hasn't been a lot of effort and everybody's put a lot of time in. I know that and I appreciate that. But I have seen other ideas not even make it to GBOS because of the locations. But I guess my point is, we have somebody in front of us that is offering this motion and we're saying no. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more comments on the board, I'm aware of the time, I'm not sure who. Okay, I'm not seeing any more comments on the board. I'm aware of the time. I'm not sure who was, had to leave it on 13 minutes.
Brianna.
Brianna.
Well, Mike, this is Brianna. If no one's in the, if no one's in the queue, I'll.
We have some members of the public who want, we do have members of the public who wanted to say something. So are you okay staying for a few more minutes?
I have to go.
Okay, in that case, can I suggest we move to a vote?
I'm glad.
Can I suggest we move to a vote then? Brianna, would you like to make that motion?
I moved the motion to support the four phases that land use wrote, we wrote.
So I think specifically you, you want to move to a vote now? Correct? Yeah, thank you. Can I get a second to that? Thank you. I will, unless there's any objection to moving straight to the vote, I will take that by consent. See no objection. So can we do a roll call vote, please?
Can we, can we get, I mean, her vote's not going to change. Can she tell us what it is? Do we typically have public input on this or?
I mean, we had plenty of public input on that.
My just, preparing a letter really short. I think it's helpful.
Jaycee?
Do you have like a, what, two more minutes, Brianna?
Yes, two minutes.
Okay.
It's simple.
Go ahead.
Jennifer is correct. It's unorthodox to include a comment that we kind of like the development, just not there. I think it should be placed in that letter because we are getting a bad reputation in Girdwood for just saying no. So while it may not be normal, it's not going to hurt your cause. I think it would look good for us as a town in Girdwood to say we like this concept, we just don't want it right here. So I propose, and also may have already mentioned it, but I think, did you, the last sentence should say special meeting on that 20, whatever it is. Already pointed that, and now we'll stop talking. Let's.
We'll do that as a clever clue.
Okay.
Okay, so we actually, that was a little unorthodox. We actually have a motion on the table to move to a vote. So we're now in the process of voting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Sure.
All right, Gadsden?
No.
Brian, Burnett?
Yes.
Guy Wade? Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passes three to.
Passes three to. Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone.
So we are now moving on to, I think we have to lose Brianna. We're moving on to item number two. Can you take that, Brian? Speak to this first.
I will be, I will be glad to, to speak to this. At the, at the last joint meeting of G B O S and Land Use Committee, we passed a resolution of support to submit the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan as a revised draft, as an amendment to the municipality of Anchorage Comprehensive Plan. And I want to, I would like to send a message forward with a little more clarity on our commitment to the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan. And that, that the, and that we are united behind the, the Comprehensive Plan as a community action and community process.
I have to disclose here, so this is an awkward space. Because the Comprehensive Plan is, I'm actually the sponsor, is the chair of Imagine Girdwood, or the petitioner rather of that plan. I have a, an interest in this item. So I have to recuse myself. And I'm also the chair, so only again, I'd had it over the co-chair. So I think I can't take part in this conversation. So I am going to, since Guy is the most senior member in the room. It's probably easier if Guy takes it rather than Jennifer online. So you're now chair. Previously, there has been a ruling by the chair that I should be recused. So I think we.
Sure. Yeah, I don't think, I think yes. Yeah, unless anybody objects. There's no other resolution.
I'll sit back quietly.
So did you finish, you're the author of this amendment or yes, this? And do you want to continue to speak to it or this is basically what we?
Yeah, this is, this is, this, I basically edited the, the document and the red line shows change at the, at the title. And then I changed the last therefore to whereas and added a new therefore that says the Girdwood Board of Supervisors resolves that the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan Revised Draft reflects extensive community engagement and supports the plan. It's a substantial amendment to the M O A Comprehensive Plan.
Anybody want to make a motion? Is there a motion or is there a description? So anyone make a motion for this?
Sorry, I'll make a motion that we accept this as amended.
I'll second that. Can I second this?
I think, I think you can second it.
And discussion?
Well, so Brian can second it or he could have moved.
Why don't, why don't you go ahead and second it?
Okay.
And then we don't have that problem.
Any discussion? From the board? Discussion from staff?
Two things. One is, is that this resolution seemed like it was a joint effort between G B O S and was it and L U C to draft? So the nature of it's being changed because what was told to the community, the group at that time, the joint meeting was that the resolution was meant to show that they support submitting the plan to the planning department. And then when it came back in a staff packet, at that point in time, it seems like this resolution would be submitted. Because between the time the planning gets submitted and by the time it gets back, there could be changes in there that we don't support.
Correct.
It's done by the planning department. So I just wanted to make sure that's clear because maybe the, I'm reading this wrong, but the way I'm reading this is that we're giving full support for the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan before we actually get the staff packet back and see what we got for a final phase. And I'm understanding that, right?
I would say that I, I wrote it as the revised draft that we submitted.
So, but we're not knowing that we're going to see a packet come in that could change that plan in between now and then.
Correct. And there is a whereas here, whereas G B O S may provide additional formal comments and recommendations during the M O A application process as part of the Planning and Zoning Commission and our Anchorage Assembly public hearings.
Okay.
I believe that the staff packet is now back for, is that not, okay, never mind. Gotcha.
Okay. Well, from a staff perspective, if you do move forward with this resolution and approve it, I would strongly encourage you to go back to L U C and show them the changes that have been made because they are not here to concur with the changes that were basically agreed upon when this resolution was passed, the joint meeting.
Yeah. I think he has a couple of good points there. You know, I understand what you, what you're doing. It does seem the timing might be a bit off. Yeah. And I don't know if it would be, if you'd be comfortable with waiting on our, our next, you know, or L U C can weigh in on it. It, you know, how important do you see this as something that needs to get to it right away or the?
I was.
When it comes out.
I just wanted to speak in support of the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan and and it, it seems that we're kind of not entirely supporting the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan right now. And this, this might be a way of continuing to demonstrate support. There is still processes going on within planning and zoning, H L B regarding land that is part of the Comprehensive Plan.
And I understand your point there. And that's the crux right now that's going on is that we're operating under the current plan. And the new plan will not go into effect until it's adopted by the assembly.
Correct.
So as developers are working, they're working with the current planning documents. So they can't really look at this plan because it's not adopted. It's still in draft form. So, so yeah, I understand your point there.
I guess a just a procedural question. Is this, you know, I know with without input from Land Use Committee on changing of this resolution on Monday, it required a special meeting. I don't see this going to that level, but is it any different?
This was a.
The resolution that they agreed to. I mean, it doesn't, change seems minor, but is it by the law the same?
Well, by your operating procedures, I would probably say yes. I mean, I mean, I would really want L E C to understand because I think we have their concurrence in here. Concurrent recommendation of support by the Girdwood Land Use by a vote of twenty seven to zero. So if, and they voted on what was in the original language here. So, and so with there, and this was up here to submit the plan.
Correct.
So, so they, and I think the way it was described during those discussions was like, you'll get a chance to see it come back because people were asking, are we approving the Girdwood Area Plan right now? And the way that people, the audience were told, no, the plan will come back as a staff pack. And at that point in time, you can review it again. And then it'll be a final recommendation given.
Jen, do you have any comments on this or maybe I guess you're on the board like Mike?
Thank you. No, I can see pros and cons to this. So no, I don't have any comments.
Yes, just another comment. There has been kind of heightened sensitivity with this going back to the land use communities, particularly after Monday night and I you know, I don't know if I get all the support just because of the process. If this was, I do support the plan and then, you know, we like to, but I just don't know now's the right time. If you want to, I'm not trying to have to pull up table. It seems like I may not be in the right time.
None, no, none taken.
Jennifer?
Actually, I think the building on that, Brian, could, could you elaborate in light of the vote we just had and then some of the explanation that we just had? Do you, do you feel strongly that this should move forward?
Not, not really. No. Let me, let me, let me just be, let me be clear on that.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. If it doesn't move forward, it's not going to ruin.
That's good. It's, I don't know how this would work, but I think it's, we could either vote yes or no, or I think when L U C sees support and would move forward. And if you want a table, it'll wait for them and we can vote on it. Whatever you think would be the best way in your mind, I think that's an option. So thank you. You've got to handle.
It is okay. As with my petition, I have some. The, the resolution that's passed by the G B O S and L U C would already use after the application packet. So it would be, I don't think that actually, and I can change that and I would be better if it didn't. If you want to ask new resolution, that's fine. And that was always the intent, ask a resolution based on the content. So the first one was just move ahead for the application. And then the intention would be to receive G B O S would have until the July meeting to look at the document detail, make any comments we want to do. And perhaps that, you know, a resolution had that that would add any comments related to the plan. And I think that, you know, giving, the community to see that both bodies' log to do that is probably probable. Thank you.
Thank you. You have other comments? Or for anybody online?
So Guy, just from a procedural aspect, you have two options in front of you. One, Brian could pull his motion and then we don't move forward. Or you could call for vote or somebody could call for vote and we can move forward.
Go ahead. To the chair, I'd be, I'd be glad to table my motion until further until further review by Land Use Committee.
So just to clarify, this was actually moved by Jennifer.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Jennifer.
What, what Brian said?
Good job.
Thank you. Do we need, we don't need a second?
Second from the second.
Oh, we do need a second.
Brian seconds it.
I'll say.
Okay.
Well, with that being said, I mean, Mike can come back and take the.
Thank you.
Chair position?
Thank you very much. So we've dealt with both items business. We're now onto public comment. There's a public person offering public comments, I think their full name is, public comments limited to three minutes per person. Subject typically on subjects not on the agenda, I think under the circumstances, we may provide wide latitude if anyone wants to make a public comment. Not seeing anyone online or in the room. So in that case, I would entertain a move to a chair.
Move to a chair.
Thank you. Second.
I have a second.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone.
Right. All right. You guys have a great day.